Okay, let's do the roll call.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Crist. Man?
Present.
Marcus?
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith?
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris?
Here.
We have a quorum.
I move to excuse Councilman Crist.
I'll second.
Just verbal vote?
Oral vote.
Do an oral vote. Yes, in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes. The invocation tonight is with Shane Idelman from West Side Christian Fellowship.
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we just come to you tonight. Lord, we ask for guidance, we ask for direction, we ask for strength for our community, Lord. I pray that you uphold our leaders. Dear Heavenly Father, just give them wisdom and knowledge, and then first and foremost, to put you first. We just pray and thank you for our blessed city, and pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Idelman.
Everybody would face a flag, put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a presentation for Sierra Parker from SOAR High School.
That is correct, Sierra is...
Sierra's late. The first award for the SOAR High School Student of the Month, and she's late.
I make that a point.
Let me know when she gets here, okay? Thank you. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the agenda item being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. City Manager, any items to be removed?
No, sir.
Thank you. Are there any items on the Agency Consent Calendar you'd like to pull for discussion, or do we have a motion and a second for adoption of the Agency Consent Calendar?
I move that we adopt the calendar as currently comprised.
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous.
Was that the minutes for January 11?
Yeah, that was January 11.
Both of them? So that was for both at the same time?
That was...
Both at the same?
Yes.
Is that correct? Good. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, if we could remove CC4, please. That was the one you voted no on, and also we have the speakers.
Okay, other than CC4, are there any other items to be removed?
I move that we adopt the Consent Calendar as currently comprised.
Second.
It's unanimous. CC4, we have one speaker card, Lyle Talbot.
I am in favor of your trash ordinance, because I've seen a lot of rumagers or salvagers in my yard, and I don't like them going through my trash bin. But I went through my trash bin the other day, and I found this old letter to the editor. It probably will never get published, but I read it here before, so I won't bore you with it, but it was talking about the mayor having a boxing match with one of his so-called stalkers, Mr. Abber. And let's do it on the boulevard, I said, and we'll call it the Boulevard Brawl Winner Take All, and the proceeds would go to the Veterans Home.
I can see why you threw it away.
Please don't interrupt me, sir. It's my three minutes. I never only used two of them.
Yes, go on.
Let me just stop here to gain my thoughts, because you upset me there. Yeah, I still think this is a pretty good idea. Mayor, I'm going to be Ab's personal trainer, and I hope you've got one. Got to raise some money for the Veterans Home, and this is a great idea, fifty dollars for ringside seats. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure. Going on to new business, we'll hear a staff report.
I make a motion to adopt CC4.
I'll second.
I almost got that biased, didn't I?
Yeah.
And it's three to one. It passes. New business, do we have any speaker cards on item one?
No new business speaker cards for NV1 or NV2.
Let's waive reading on those two. Any objections?
Nope.
Is there a motion on NV1?
To adopt Resolution Number 11-07.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Is there a motion on NV2?
I'll move that we adopt Introduce Ordinance Number 961.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Council reports. We have a report from Councilmember Marcus on the activities of the Antelope Valley Transit Authority.
Yo, I can't hear you out here, sir.
Turn your hearing aid up. Can you guys hear me? Sorry, Mr. Talbot, they all can hear me. Good, thank you.
There was an AVTA meeting today, and the board received a report from Consultant Julie Austin, and it was the previously a document that was not shared with the board, but key report findings included a recommendation to purchase and maintain excess umbrella liability insurance on the automobile policy. The report also recommended the addition of pollution liability insurance, including coverage for onsite and offsite cleanup. There is also a closed session with no reportable actions.
Thank you. Any questions? CR2?
I have a speaker card in for that, sir.
Mr. Talbot?
Thank you.
We'll get to you, okay? Thank you. Mr. Talbot, when I call your name, you can come up and speak. We're not going to forget you, we're not going to lose you, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want to do the report?
Certainly. The board amended Rule 219, which is equipment not requiring a permit. The staff provided the board an update on the Palmdale Power Plant, which is in the process of review by the CEC, which is the California Energy Commission, excuse me. The governing board directed the air pollution control officer to not submit a determination to the CEC until which time the board makes a decision on this subject, which will be brought up for discussion in February's meeting.
Mr. Talbot?
I have got to get new batteries for that thing.
I can lend you mine if you wanted.
No, I have to have it. See, Ms. Marquez, this is in your bailiwick. This Palmdale Power Plant's not going to look pretty, and if you know that we have a terrible asthma, COPD problem here in the valley, and I'm curious to know who will speak at the hearing on February 3rd. Is anybody from the city going to make a presentation or lodge a complaint? No response. I am proud of Councilmember Crist telling the Eldon Heaston over there at the Air Quality Board to sit down and take a seat and keep quiet at that hearing, because he is not one of our friends, even though he lives in the Victorville Valley. I've been following all this. We're going to have a solar field to reflect the pilots coming in and going out. We're going to have two 145-foot stacks right off of the runway. If somebody has an engine failure and turns right, hit those smokestacks, it'll be a hell of a project. I have written to General Hoffman, who's in charge of Air Material Command in Ohio, and received correspondence from him. Mr. Wilton here is December 24th, had the wrong date for the hearing, now that's been straightened out, so I'm hoping somebody from this council gets up and speaks our piece. And I was hoping Reverend Hearns would be here, because there's an environmental justice issue in the plan, and it says there's no problem, but a lot of them, Henry Hearns, Bishop Hearns, people live on the east side of the valley, and I would hope that he would stand up and speak up for the low-income ethnic minority over there. I'll try to contact him before that meeting, and I certainly hope that our city is represented. Are you busy, Mr. Mayor? You seem awfully engrossed in something else. Thank you very much.
No action on the Lancaster Financing Authority, City Manager?
No, sir.
Thank you. City Clerk, your announcements.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for anyone to address the City Council on items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the chambers on the table. We respectfully request that you fill the cards out completely and print as clearly as possible, so that if the City Manager, the City Council, or staff needs to get in touch with you, they will be able to read your card. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time does begin when you begin to speak. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have thirty seconds left, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting, and we do appreciate your cooperation. State law does prohibit the City Council from taking actions on items that are not on the agenda, so your matter will be referred to the City Manager. Thank you.
Lyle Talbot?
I'm here to bring to your attention the television schedule of these proceedings. They're on live tonight at 5:00, and all my friends down at my local bistro are watching me. Hi, gang. And you rebroadcast every night at 5:00 PM. People who work outside the valley, and we have about thirty, forty thousand of them that commute, cannot be home to watch their television at 5:00 PM. So you do rebroadcast it once a week, or every day of the week, at 2:00 AM in the morning, when those commuters, and most of us are in bed, and they're getting up to go to work early in LA, and at 2:00 PM, got it highlighted, that's when you put on these council proceedings. What do you got to hide? I know you can't take an action, but anybody got a comment about why you hold those proceedings or broadcast them at 2:00 in the morning? You have Hugh Houser on in the daytime, in the evening, City News, things like that. Come on, let's get real about broadcasting these proceedings on our local television channel. We're paying for it, and we should be able to have the benefit of it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Talbot, there's a thing called a computer and the Internet, and if you get one, you can type in the city's website, and on the city's website, you can see the meetings at your convenience, and if you need some help, somebody in the city staff would be happy to teach you how to use one. Thank you.
I'm not up at 2:00 AM very often, sir.
David Abber?
Doing staff and citizens. There was a meeting here held on Martin Luther King Day last Monday, and I've been coming to these meetings for a while, and I'm not understanding why we fail to do the flag salute. I think it takes about fifteen seconds at most, which is... And I'm not really sure what the big rush to the emergency meeting was also, what it was that if you were trying to get the citizen's support behind protecting the redevelopment assets, you'd think you'd hold a meeting at 3:00 or 4:00 when somebody could get here, even though it was a holiday. But that's just one of the issues. With respect to the rules to these meetings, which I think that might fall under, I noticed at the last meeting that we're breaking the rules once again. People that didn't have speaker cards in on time were able to speak, and you even went on record as saying, Mr. Mayor, that you're going to break the rules, and that's what we have the city attorney for. On that note, there's several lawsuits filed against the city. I'm curious what's going on with the prayer, the Mongol suit, and the Allied Arch suit, and I'm sure there's a few others. If we get updated on that, that'd be great. And then there's the little issue of 10,000 jobs that was promised. I believe that was back last year, January, February, and here we sit, and there hasn't been one single job brought here. While you dodged another candidate in the last election, you couldn't debate the candidates, the candidate forum, because you were busy getting 10,000 jobs. And here we sit, and there hasn't been one job brought back. Hopefully, that'll get addressed soon. And I also concur with Mr. Talbot, who did bring the power plant issue that was going to pollute our heirs, that you guys took and ran with last year when it was convenient. But Mr. Crist should be commended for his standing up and doing the right thing. And also, with respect, I noticed in the newspaper today that guess we're going to have the sounds of a bird that's going to make it a more pleasant Lancaster Boulevard. That's good. Hopefully, it'll be a safe place for everybody to go. Thank you very much for your time.
Cynthia Spears?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I'm here on behalf of Change Lanes Youth Support Services, and I'll just go down my list so I don't forget anything. Change Lanes is located at 1122 West Avenue, L12, Suite 102 and 103. We've been in business since January of 2005, and we provide services to at-risk youth who are involved in the criminal justice system, foster care, community reentry, and transition. We target youth ages of seven to 21 years of age. We have been self-supporting and sustaining for the past five years with some state contracts, contracts through Los Angeles County Office of Education and the Division of Juvenile Justice. However, that funding has ceased this past June. We no longer receive state funds, and Change Lanes needs the community's support. We have been to the Lancaster School District, to the Antelope Valley Union High School District, to, we have contacted the mayor's office, we have contacted the City Council, and a host of other places looking for funding to keep our doors open. We provide mentoring, tutoring, an after-school program of counseling, including mentoring and tutoring, a weekend safe haven, crisis intervention, job readiness, and community service for our youth. We partner with the Dare to Dream Foundation, which is hosted by Wendell Tyler, ex-NFL player for the 49ers, and New Life Community Church, who has been good in opening their doors and allowing, and providing tutors for us, and allowing tutoring to come out of their facility. We are in need of support from our community to keep our doors open, so that's why I am here this evening. I pulled up some statistics briefly on the California Department of Education website, and it's noted that middle schools in the Lancaster area, particularly Endeavour Middle School, Armegosa Creek Middle School, Hyute Middle School, NuVista Middle School, and I believe Parkview shut down, has the highest truancy rates in Los Angeles County area. A lot of our clients come from those schools. They have no after-school program, they have no place for these at-risk youth to go. We need your support.
How much?
How much money? We run on a budget of about eighty-five thousand dollars a year.
And what's your shortfall?
Eighty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
David Tossel?
Good evening, sir, Councilmembers. I'm here on the same note to support the Change Lanes Youth Foundation. From experience as a young man, as myself, going through a lot of things, I had help, people mentoring, supporting me and whatnot, changed my life. I have a relative that's in this program, and I've seen that it's working for her. And all I'd like to do is, one, say, if you can't support it, it'd be great, I think these kids really need it. And, two, on a positive note, I don't really care what anybody says. Mayor, thank you for doing what you've done in the community. I'm happy. I like it here, I love it here, and I thank all you guys for getting done what you have done. Personally, I'd like to come shake your hand, if that's okay.
I would love to shake your hand, but we have to do it afterwards.
All right. Thank you.
You know, there's security issues.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. Natalia, where's Natalia? I want to go over to Change Lanes and see what that is, see as early as I can, okay? Thank you. Ernesto Ponce? Hey, this better be good. You're the youngest guy, you know, we want some energy here.
My name's Ernesto, and I got intro last year in July. I ended up in Change Lanes about a couple of weeks ago, and since I started, not only do they feed me with counseling, but they also taught me life lessons. I do office work and a couple of more stuff that has helped me build up my job skills. Change Lanes is a program to change and become a better person. I regret a lot of stuff from back then, but one thing I don't regret is stepping into Change Lanes.
Thank you. David Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, good evening. I'm glad that gentleman spoke. I was getting a little down there. I leave the house and come to council meetings so I don't have to listen to children bicker, and I wasn't enjoying myself. You know, last week, or last council, I spoke about the passing of my sister, and I wasn't actually prepared, but there was a couple of things I would have added. You know, love is all there really is. Love is what we need. I was watching CNBC the other day, I'm no Larry Kudlow expert, and I don't cite him as an authority, but when guys like that sit there and say three times unsarcastically that the world is ending, the world is ending, the world is ending, he's talking about the financial world, and we have to pull together and love each other. Councilwoman Marcus, I'm sorry that people don't know the rhyme, Marcus rhymes with carcass, but I would like to see everyone address you respectfully and call you by your name. We have to get along. I just believe that more than ever, that bickering doesn't do any good, turns people off, and, Mr. Talbot, you have so much to say and contribute. If you'd just do it a little kinder, we would get the message a little clearer. So, good evening, I want to get home for the State of the Union, and I'm going to get out of here. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Savala?
Good evening, Council, this is Victoria Savala, community. I'm just here basically to give a little bit more updated information on basically what's going on with the cannabis movement. What movement? Lots of movement. Basically, what's going on right now, and what is concerning me, is what's happening in our area. Right now, in our neighboring cities, in Rosemont and Kern County, you can go in and just open up shop. A third one is going to open up. So how does that affect Lancaster and, you know, Palmdale, Antelope Valley? It does. Because unfortunately, the way I hate to say this, and as a patient advocate, safe access is just kind of slipping away. I mean, the members are coming back, and they're saying, Victoria, the quality, the service, the safety, the method means it matters, and medication. I'm going to Berkeley this weekend in San Jose in hopes of getting more information. What's going on with cannabis reform? What's our next steps? And the reality is, is, you know, people are here in the Antelope Valley dispensing medicine left and right. There's hydroponic shops, there's over three dozens of smoke affiliated smoke shops. So, I mean, it's here, nobody's collecting taxes on it, nobody's controlling it, regulating it, I mean, you know, I'm anxious for the State of the Union too, because if I had an opportunity to ask Obama a question, it'd be, when are you going to finally regulate this? You know, before you even consider taxing this and legalizing this, when are we going to finally get it regulated? When is it going to be off the federal level and rescheduled? And so I'm in hopes of going up north, coming back with lots of information. How can we make this better here in the Antelope Valley? Again, they tell me that this is ground zero. How can I still keep on going? We do, because there's a need. There's a lot of members out there that are sick like me. Our disability doesn't end, it's full-time. But as a cannabis patient and as a patient advocate, I'm still here. And so the reality is, is those people really want safe access, they want quality medicine, they want to be able to say they know exactly what the THC percentage is, the CBDs, the CBLs, et cetera, any pesticides, chlorophyll, those types of things. And I know, two years ago, I said we weren't ready for this. So all I'm asking is that why can't I have a location? Not with medicine on the premises, just with information, education, awareness, workshops, classes. I'm part of the chambers, how can I have a mixer? I can't be part of a mixer because I don't have a location. But I'll tell you, a lot of those people in the community, they're, they want to get involved. We're not just about cannabis, we're about alkaline water, you know, berries, information, wellness, education. It's a lot more than just marijuana. So all I'm saying is that consider new proposals, new ideas. We're still a collective, we're still a nonprofit, and we still have a right here in the Antelope Valley. I'm just looking for the right location when you guys are ready, even if Palmdale's ready. Not a dispensary. I never said I was a dispensary, but I'm a wellness center, and we have a lot more to offer. So hopefully, I come back after this weekend with some kind of idea for Antelope Valley or Palmdale or Lancaster.
I don't understand why you can't have a location.
Why we can't have a location?
Yeah, how are we preventing that if you're not dispensing?
Because basically, I just need to get a permit from the city saying, okay, we understand, we can move on to the next step. But this is something, an idea, saying, you know, can we do that if we're not going to dispense any medicine? And this is a place that we can now have meetings, workshop, classes, you know, things that we can move on.
Is that not a First Amendment issue?
I don't know, it's the first I've heard of it. If you contact me tomorrow, we'll put you in touch with the right staff.
But not dispense, just, you know, we're here.
I got it.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sure that...
Last impul.
Okay. Thank you. Our SOAR student is here? Where is she? I'm actually glad you're late, because I needed a shining star in the meeting. Come here. One second. Let's get their attention, okay? This is Sierra Parker. She is a student at SOAR High School.
She is a student at SOAR High School. And SOAR High School, it really is the jewel of Lancaster. If you don't know what's going on at SOAR, you owe it to yourself to find out. What they're accomplishing there is so incredibly remarkable. Every, every child that... Well, I guess you're not children when you graduate. Every senior that graduated from SOAR High School went to college. Every single one. I don't know that there's a school in the nation that can say that. Certainly not a public school. Every one of them graduated with one or two years' worth of college credits. Isn't that right?
Yes.
Right? Now, what's truly remarkable about this is where these students come from. Sierra grew up in a single-parent household and will be the first-generation four-year university applicant. Chemistry has been her most significant class because it has allowed her to find a new passion. In fact, Sierra changed her career plans after taking chemistry and biology. Sierra describes her two most significant activities as drill team, yearbook, because in drill team, she has been selected to be the captain-coach, yearbook, because it allows her to show her creativity and school spirit. Her activities include drill team, two years, avid club, four years. What's the 20... Oh, that's when you graduate, right? 2011 club, four years. Yearbook, two years. She was secretary, graphic designer, and photographer. Christian club, two years. Praise dance, eight years. Grace resource volunteer, running warriors volunteer, breast cancer awareness volunteer. Her college major is biochemistry. She wants to be a pediatrician. Her academic, she had academic recognition awards in the 10th and 11th grades both semesters and a chemistry recognition award in the 11th grade. So you are our first SOAR High School student of the month and you get a $1,000 scholarship. Okay? I can't express enough how important you are to our city. You really are our hope and our prayers are with you and we want you to come back and tell us just how well you succeeded. Okay? Thank you. Okay.
Yes. Come on down. This is the principal of SOAR High School. It's Michael, I forgot your name.
Dutton.
Dutton, that's right. I'm sorry. He's the one who created that school. They got a Melinda and Bill Gates grant and created something that is truly phenomenal and something nobody thought you were going to be successful at. To, I mean, you really soared, you know? It was a perfect name of the school. And the day I spent, I spent a half a day there and I came away just, just in awe of what you're doing and I want to thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And what you're doing for us.
I have one comment. I understand that we had two birthdays last week, Mayor Paris and Jerry Bryan. And Mr. Bozigan?
Yes, Mayor, you have the fortune or misfortune of sharing with our city clerk and...
Go figure.
I think it was January 20th.
It was also our city attorney's birthday.
No kidding?
No, same day.
That's scary.
Same day, no.
Okay, very close. So we know all of you are very good about watching what you eat, so instead of a big cake, we got you little cupcakes from Ray's Cupcakes on the boulevard and you can all share those. Happy birthday.
Well, thank you. It's also Martin Luther King's birthday, correct? Okay, we're going to adjourn. Anything else? Anybody else? Okay, good. We will adjourn the meeting in memory of Marguerite Tyke Killen, an intrepid aviator who flew military aircraft during World War II and was honored by Congress last year as a decorated member of the Women's Air Force Service Pilots. She was 86. During World War II's darkest days, they were, they were among the few women pilots who flew thousands of stateside missions, freeing their male counterparts to fly in combat. These women courageously answered their country's call in a time of need while blazing a trail for the brave women who have given and continue to give so much in service to this nation. Tyke Killen was 86 years old. She is survived by a son and three daughters. We are adjourned until Tuesday, February 8th, 2011, at 5:00 PM. Carol, my day is done and I'm coming home.